Walking down the sidewalk.
Ready, Ms. Gwen?
Nope.
Let's go ahead. Board members, don't forget to enter the meeting. The regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Board to be held at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, October 1st, 2025, in the Iberia Parish School Boardroom at the Administrative Building located at 1500 Jane Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. Call to order, let the Iberia Parish School Board meeting be called to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Gwen, here.
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 Thank you, Ms. Gwen. We'll have a moment of silence for Ms. Gladys Stevens Booty, former school cafeteria technician in Laurville, followed by the prayer by Ms. McNeil and the pledge by Mr. LeBlanc. Please stand. Amen. Ms. McNeil.
Lord God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful condition. Conclusion, thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Mr. LeBlanc.
Please face the flag and recite me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Public comment instructions on agenda items. The requirement regarding public comment for a school board meeting is that a call for public comment must take place prior to each agenda item and vote on by the board. If you wish to comment on an agenda item during this meeting, please proceed as follows. Please fill out a card with your first and last name, the agenda item you wish to address. These requests to address the board regarding an agenda item will be heard prior to each agenda item as is taken up. Any more cards to be turned in? Seeing none. There is no presentations. Moving on to consent. Any board member wish to remove a consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none. C1, approved minutes, regular meeting of the Iberia Parish School Board, September 17th, 2025. C2, financial highlights. And C3, budget to actual public comment. Hearing none. Motion. Moved by Mr. Pratier, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Board questions? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen? Would you uh uh vote? Oh, Rev. Sorry, I missed that one. He might have not entered the meeting. Rev, you vote yes? Okay, we'll note it. We'll note it. Let her clear the board now try to enter the meeting.
Did that, I know he did that while he was.
It's not, uh, it's not letting him go in? Okay. We'll check on the next one. Moving on to agenda item D1, consider recommendation to provide a one-time, non-recurring stipends to all active, full-time certified and non-certified employees and take appropriate action. Is Ms., you take, Mr. Hulane? Oh, Ms. Tannen, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is seeking board approval to issue this one-time, non-recurring stipend. Funds were received on September 5th in the amount of $3,140,030. It is $2,000 for certificated and $1,000 for the support staff. Our pre-K program was not supported with this allocation, so we are requesting that $80,785 comes from the general fund. And the date of distribution would be October 24th, 2025. And the only stipulation to receive this one-time stipend is for you to be an active salaried employee on the date of distribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tannen. We do have one public comment, Ms. Kalon Babino, representing Iberia Federation of Teachers and School Employees.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. I want to first thank you on the behalf of our members for getting this stipend out in a timely manner because we have members that express their need for this stipend. So we appreciate you pushing it out this early. One thing that I must interject about is according to the guidelines from the state to distribute the money, the approved salary schedule from August 6, 2025 meeting, where the 25-26 district salary schedule booklet was adopted, must be amended to include the stipend in the salary schedule. According to LDOE, if the salary schedule was already approved, it just needs to be amended and put at the bottom of the plan. So again, thank you for pushing it out this early. I just wanted to make that statement.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Babino.
Thank you. And Ms. Babino, it's on our intention to bring that to the next meeting. The Board needs to approve the distribution first, and then once they approve the distribution, we will amend the salary schedule at the next meeting. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Babino. Need a motion. Moved by Mr. Dugah, seconded by Reverend Alexander. Questions or comments from the Board? Reverend Alexander.
Mr. Hulane. If someone was employed but got either suspended or fired or resigned, how are we going to handle that?
The stipulation is that on the date of distribution, they have to be an active employee. So if they were employed but are no longer employed with us, then they're not eligible for the stipend. They have to be a current employee. Because we only, the state allocates an amount based on the number of employees we have. So if there was somebody who was employed with us and they left, they're then replaced by somebody else. So that stipend has to go to the person who's in that spot on the date of distribution.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
You good, Rev?
I'm good.
Mr. Pratier.
Yes, Mr. Hulane. Okay, you're talking about the salary schedule, but this is a one-time. So you're just going to enter it at the bottom as a one-time stipend. It doesn't go into the salary schedule.
No, sir. It doesn't go in, but we have to make a notation in the salary schedule booklet that that was, that this amount was dispersed to our teachers. So if in the future, if somebody wants to come back and say, what did we pay our teachers in 25-26? They could go to the salary schedule book and they would take the salary from the schedule and then they go to the addendum and add the 2,000.
Right.
So we just have to make a note in the book that we, that we gave this.
Okay, but the way we stated like, you know, it would be a part of a salary.
No, no, no.
No.
No, it says a one-time.
That's what I thought it was, a one-time stipend.
When we bring y'all the amendment for the salary schedule book, it's going to be an asterisk at the bottom that notes one-time distribution.
One time only.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. I just wanted to make it clear. You know, I believe in clarity.
Any other board questions? So we have a motion by Mr. Dugah, seconded by Reverend Alexander. Ms. Gwen, please vote. Ms. Gwen? That motion passes.
My stuff paid this time. The antenna from around my, it wasn't under the table, he was on top of it.
Moving on to agenda item D2, consider recommendations for adoption of a clear-bag policy for athletic events and take appropriate action. Mr. Hulane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this recommendation is another measure of our safety and security plan that we're committed to providing a safe and secure environment for all of our students, staff, and families and community members who attend school-sponsored events. In a recent consultation with our local law enforcement, with a meeting with the Chief of Police and the Sheriff, we discussed the necessity to align our practices with those that have been adopted by surrounding school districts. Iberia Parish Schools would like to implement a clear-bag policy for athletic and extracurricular events held at our district facilities. So the policy is designed to enhance security measures, to expedite entry and reduce the risk of prohibited items being brought into school venues. So the recommendation is based upon a review of all of the clear-bag policies in the surrounding districts, Lafayette, Vermillion, St. Mary, and St. Martin. And the policies are all consistent amongst those districts where one clear plastic vinyl or PVC bag not to exceed 12 by 12 by six inches, or one clear resealable gallon Ziploc storage bag would be allowed, or a clutch bag, purse, or wallet, 5.5, no larger than 5.5 or 7.5 inch, inches. Those would be the only bags that would be allowed into our extracurricular and athletic events. All other bags would be prohibited. So prohibited bags would include backpacks and purses, duffel bags, diaper bags, and large totes that are not clear. Special exception would be if an infant is, is being admitted and there's a diaper bag, that diaper bag may be submitted if they subject the bag to a search at the entry. And medical bags and equipment for, you know, oxygen tanks and that type of things would be permitted upon inspection at the desired entry points. So all bags, regardless if they're clear or not clear, would be subject to inspection upon entry. Our metal detectors and hand wands may be used at entry points when applicable, and refusal to comply with this policy or submit to the bag for inspection will result in the denial of entry. We intend to, if you favorably approve this policy tonight, we would enforce it beginning at next week's events. So not this Friday. This, we would take this weekend, this Friday's events, athletic events, as a notice to be placed at all the entrances, and we'll give them a week's notice, and then we would begin this, this practice at the following week. So the adoption of this policy would align us with our neighboring districts. It reflects the recommendations of the New Iberia Police Department and the Iberia Parish Sheriff's Office, and implementing a clear-bag policy adds another layer of protection at large gatherings and supports efficient security procedures and prioritizes the safety of our students and the community. Any questions?
Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Move? Okay, move by Mr. Segura, second.
Who won the second?
Ms. McNeil is going to take the second. Question by Mr. Segura.
That pertains also to graduations.
Yes, sir. That would be considered a, a large gathering, a large extracurricular event.
Make sure when invitations go out and tickets or whatever they have a little.
Yes.
One more.
Mr. Pratier.
Yes. Well, after discussion with the superintendent, we will have, if I'm incorrect, we will have pictures of the items that, and we should have it by this Friday, right, Mr., yeah, that will be placed to let you see, such as fanny packs or big duffel type bags that are called camera bags. All these will be prohibited, and there's a picture of it. So if you didn't get the news, then when you walk there, you can see it. These are prohibited. So I think that's a great idea, Ms.
Yeah, we had some, some of the, my fellow superintendents shared some posters that they have in their districts, and so we'll, we'll get one modeled after that for us, and it has pictures of all the prohibited items and it has the requirements for the bags and the clear bags listed, and we'll post that at the entrance to all of our gyms and athletic facilities and auditoriums and anything else where we hold large events.
Good.
And you said that they were going to put a poster this week at the games?
Yes.
To start notifying the people for next week's games?
And once it's approved, all our schools will use their, you know, Facebook and social media to get it out to the public.
Perfect. Any other, Reverend Alexander.
Given each principal, we be given that resolution where it could start announcing it so all kids will let the parents or loved ones know that we have that policy established?
Yes, sir. We're, we're going to actually do a district letter that we send to each school with all of the requirements in it, and then they could, each school could send it out.
Push it out through text message.
Yes.
And I'd just like to add that a lot of our families who attend football games on a regular basis, because we play schools in Vermillion and Lafayette, most of our families already have the clear bags, because if we go to an away game, they have to have it. So it won't be that much of a burden because I was at the Nish game the other night, and most people are walking through with clear bags because they need them when we play them in an away game.
We're one of the last districts to adopt it, so.
Even had to do with a clear one. I got scared then.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll tell you this, on Saturday, we went to New Orleans. They had our coaches sign a letter stating that we had agreed, we had searched all of our student athletes, our cheerleaders as well. So I, I think that's going to be coming in the next couple of years or so too as well.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Roseman? Oh, she got it. All right, Ms. Gwen? That motion passes. Moving on to agenda item D3, consider the superintendent's performance goals and objectives for the 2025-2026 school year upon which the superintendent's annual evaluation will be based. Mr. Hulane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So before you, you have the document which outlines the goals for the 25-26 school year. These goals were formulated in conjunction with all of the department heads from the different departments in the district, met with them, and we discussed what each department would work towards for this year, and they, I included their goals as part of my, my presentation tonight. So in, in the past, there was a lot of things listed under educational leadership, but this year I actually divided it up, and you'll see there's some subcategories. Curriculum and Instruction, specially funded programs, technology, special education, school administration and management, student transportation, all fall under educational leadership. Number two, Business and Operations, those goals encompass goals for the Business Department and Mr. Lopez and the Maintenance and Operations Department. And in number three, Community Employee Relations, contains goals from the Human Resources Department. So all of our departments are represented here tonight. The goals document is seven pages. It's a lot that we have planned to accomplish this year. I won't go through each of them, but I would like to highlight some of the priorities and some of the categories. Under Educational Leadership for Curriculum and Instruction, two of the big things that we're working on this year is to further enhance our literacy instruction, and that's in grades K3. We'll be working on reading acquisition as measured, measured by the DIBBLES assessment to ensure that our students are leaving third grade reading on grade level. We're also going to be expanding the use of high dosage tutoring in both math and ELA. That was begun last year with Act 771. This is required tutoring during the school day. We began this last year with the implementation, implementation of Act 771, and we saw some, some great strides amongst our kids. So we're going to be improving and expanding that initiative for high dosage tutoring during the school day. This year, I'm developing and implementing a principal support team. I've assembled a, a group of 12 district leaders who have all served as a principal or an assistant principal prior to their role as a district leader. Together, the 12 of us represent 189 years of experience as an educational leader, as a, as assistant principal or above. And the 12 of us will each mentor and work with a principal across all of our campuses. And so that principal support team has begun meeting with principals and visiting campuses, and it's just an initiative to help have more of a presence of district leadership on our school campuses and have a liaison or a support system for our principals. Last, in curriculum and instruction, we're going to continue and strengthen, to strengthen and improve practices of school-based instructional leadership teams and our teacher cluster collaboration by growing our principals and master teachers to increase their capacity for instructional leadership. Now that each of our school sites has a master teacher on the campus, we're able to better support our teachers and coach them in the classroom, and we're going to continue that practice this year. Three goals that I'd like to highlight for our specially funded programs department, and that's to expand art and music opportunities in our, at our schools, to increase family engagement opportunities with the establishment of our Parent Resource Center this year, and to provide opportunities for parent education related to educational, social, emotional behavior and well-being through online classes and parent coaching sessions where we could work with parents to help serve their kids better at home so that we have an easier time at school. So we'll be working with those parent education programs this year. Under Technology, two things that I'd like to highlight is that Ms. Candace and her department will be working towards improving our district-wide efforts at preventing malware and phishing attempts to compromise our network, and they're going to be working to educate employees to reduce the chances of threats to our network by, by those phishing and malware campaigns that can try to come to us through email and different things. So network security is high on the list in this category. And they're also going to be looking at developing and communicating guidance policies for AI for educators. There's a lot of things out there that educated, that could help educators and students that are AI-based, and there's some things that could, could hurt it, hurt students and educators. So they're going to be sifting through, trying to develop a policy related to AI for us and providing professional development opportunities for teachers and staff related to AI and education. As far as Special Education Department, we want to continue to grow and improve our IVIER program. That's our program to prepare special ed students to transition from high school to the workforce. They're going to be working to increase support opportunities for their sped teachers to become more effective in core curriculum, instruction, and support. That's our sped resource teachers. And they're working right now, and the goal for this year is so that we are fully compliant with Act 479, which is to implement and install cameras in certain special, special education classrooms in accordance with Act 479 across the district. And that work is underway already between the Special Education Department and the Maintenance Department. School Administration and Management will be planning and implementing district-wide measures to decrease our absentee rate. Again, we're actually tracking that on a monthly basis, following all of the schools and the activities that they have put in place to decrease absenteeism. We're going to continue to evaluate our safety protocols at all schools, and we're going to be using data from safety audits that Ms. Moore's department will be conducting on our school campuses to make sure that we're in, they're in compliance with all of our safety measures and make recommendations for continued improvements on our campuses. And we're going to be expanding our current principal mentor academy, and by providing tailored support and coaching to principals, we have a, a goal of having at least 12 principals involved in this, this, this program, where they'll be attending monthly meetings to help them with administration and, and learning the role of the principal, and they're also going to be paired with a mentor where they'll have coaching sessions provided as well. As far as Student Transportation Management, a few things that I'd like to highlight there is we're enhancing our training for bus drivers by providing more professional development opportunities. That was already underway at the beginning of this school year. Our drivers came in for three days of training sessions. We had another training session that was just this past Friday where drivers came in and we're going to be working with Dr. White to make sure that we increase training to reduce, you know, accidents and, and things that could, you know, make the Transportation Department stronger by having more well-trained drivers. He's also working on some strategies to decrease driver absenteeism. Our goal for this year was to optimize our routes, eliminate some unnecessary routes, and consolidate our Transportation Department functions. And that was well underway at the beginning of this school year. And another goal that we're working on is to provide opportunities for GPS tracking and related enhancements to increase transportation efficiency and student safety. So Dr. White and I will be looking at that this year, how we could bring in GPS tracking systems on our buses to achieve those goals. In terms of Business and Operations, we'll be providing training and support this year to our bookkeepers and principals to reinforce our district fiscal procedures to make sure that all schools are following those procedures and protocols. We have a lot of new principals, a lot of new secretaries, so we decided to make a goal to make sure that everybody's on the same page and adhering to all of those fiscal policies to make sure that we continue to have good, clean audits of our schools. Also, from the Business Department, they're developing a salary schedule handbook that coincides with the new salary schedules that you adopted at the beginning of this school year, and that handbook is being produced and will be made available to all employees as a result of that initiative. In terms of Maintenance and Operations, we'll be increasing opportunities and seeking more grants to make our campuses more energy efficient by continuing, continuing to transform the lighting on campuses to LED lights, which is much more energy efficient and much brighter as well. Developing and improving solutions for the management of surplus equipment, be working with Mr. Lopez on that, on that surplus inventory, and planning and implementing steps for the successful completion of our bond projects that are ongoing and according to the approved timeline. In terms of Human Resources, we're going to be working to provide support for uncertified teachers to increase the opportunities for them to become certified during this school year and for us to be able to retain certified, qualified teachers in all classrooms. And I've asked the Human Resources Department to work with our health insurance agent to educate employees on options that they have to choose that could help us with our claims ratios by, you know, in making sure that they're making choices with healthcare providers, choosing the right provider, choosing generics when they're available. So they're going to, HR will work with DJW to do some education for our employees to help with our insurance as well. In terms of Employee and Community Relations, I'm going to have a goal to continue the, the weekly radio show on KNE, the bi-weekly radio show on KNE, and continue sending a weekly newsletter to board members and working with our social media department to make sure that we can expand our social media presence on Facebook and our website to tell the positive story of our schools. And then lastly, some personal things for me as superintendent, I would like to continue working with, have a goal to continue working with the Great Iberia Chamber of Commerce and the Industrial Development Foundation to keep abreast of economic trends and developments in the parish that are directly related to the school system and our taxing authority, and to keep abreast of educational and technology and operational trends by continuing to be involved in professional organizations and attend professional conferences in order to sustain a thriving school district. So that was a quick overview of some of the highlights, you know, of the seven-page document, but of course, you, you've had the document in your packet, so if you have any questions about anything in particular, I'd be more than happy to address it. These are the goals which you will revisit in May when it's time for my evaluation, and you, you will be able to evaluate me on each of the categories that are presented here tonight. So this is an ongoing, it's a living document, and we continue adding to it throughout the year. and we continue adding to it throughout the year for that presentation at the end of the year where you could decide how well or if I met the goals that were presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hulane. Public comment? Hearing none. Motion? Moved by Reverend Alexander, seconded by Ms. Sharpenche. Questions for Mr. Hulane? Hearing none. Ms. Gwen, please vote. Ms. Gwen. That motion passes. Moving on to announcements. Mr. Dugah.
I know I'm so proud of my people in Louisville. I have a young student in Louisville, a little junior. She scored a 33 on an ACT test.
She scored a what?
33. What's her name, Ms. Mars? Reagan. It's Ms. Mars's daughter. She's well-tutored. And she's making us, and she's just a junior. She... 30, 30 points better than mine. She, she, uh...
And you got those points for writing your name on it?
You got four, four points for that. Only got three points, man. How you done that? But, uh, yeah, so we're proud of our little students in Louisville. Ms. Mars promises, you know, do a little bit better and try to get a 36.
Congratulations. Mr. Hulane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Tuesday at NISH, October 7, from 8 to 12, we're hosting our District Career and College Expo again. The theme for this year is Growing Your Future. All the juniors and seniors from each of the five high schools will be attending. We also invited the Acadian, we invited all of the private schools, but Acadian and Christian School and Catholic High will also be participating in this. We have over 35 vendors, which represent colleges, universities, local business and industry, and the military that will be participating in the career expo. You also have a flyer at your places for the Iberia Parish Special Olympics, which is hosted by our, our Iberia Parish Special Education Department, October 16 at NISH, which is a Thursday. Opening ceremonies at 9:30 a.m. and on the track at NISH. So, if you'd like to come at 9:30 a.m., they do the, the torch, the carrying of the torch around the track as part of the opening ceremonies. And it's, it's a nice event to come out and support. Yesterday, was it yesterday? Community First Bank had a ribbon cutting for our talented art students. We have an exhibit of their art. It's on display in the lobby at Community First Bank. So, I'd like to thank them for opening their lobby for us. They're going to keep that exhibit up all year long, and they're going to be rotating out with new artwork from our students as the year progresses. So, if you have the opportunity to go by Community First, take a look at the artwork on the wall. It's done by the students of Iberia Parish Schools. Just a reminder, we have an insurance committee meeting next Wednesday at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And October is National Principal Appreciation Month. So, if you see a principal during the month of October, thank them for the work that they do. They are so important to, to helping us keep the school system moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hulane. Any other? Reverend Alexander.
Mr. Hulane, how do we assign our Acadian ambulance to our extracurricular activity? The reason why I'm saying that, last Thursday, that one hour player from Louisville got injured, and he took him off of the field on the little go-kart. And when he got to the track, they say his father didn't put him in the back of the car. That's dangerous. If a kid get hurt on a field, especially an injury like that, we should have medical people taking him to the facility that they're taking him to.
So, it's the school's responsibility to reach out to Acadian Ambulance and give them a copy of their schedule. Acadian Ambulance does usually send a letter to remind the school, and they will come to the event, and they stay as long as they are not called out for another emergency. So, I don't know, because sometimes they'll be there and then have to leave. And if something happens, we can call them back. But it, they, they do normally, the school communicates their schedules with them. So, we may just need to check into whether or not that's...
That's dangerous when a kid took an injury like that for the, for a parent to transport him. That's could be some serious liability.
We'll look into that. And we do have our athletic trainers who are there to provide first aid on the spot. But, you know, if the ambulance had to leave for whatever reason, I'm not sure why.
She was there. She took care of everything until he got to the parking lot. I figured when he left, when he left off the field, that should have been a kid that had to pick him up, not bringing him to the parking lot for his father to bring him.
Right.
Or I, I asked Mr. Dugah, but he said he wasn't aware because that's, that's some serious thing, especially with a breakage because they had him in like, oh, air cast. So, it means something had to be broken for him to be transported like that to his, by his parents.
Yeah. We'll check into it to see what happened.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Moved by Mr. Pradye, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. Ms. Gwen. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned at 6:05.